All right, good job, go please.
This is the February 18th, 2015, continuation hearing of Livingston County. Sony Moore appeals review of this county's zoning case issue 714. Plaid Energy LLC, Post Ridge Energy Projects, call Michael Carnell.
Here.
John Bittson here. Richard Keever.
Here.
Dan Knaigerson.
Here.
Howard Zimmerman.
Here.
John Newsman.
Here.
Gibson Nelson.
All right, we'll start the evening out here. We've got a couple of housekeeping items we want to take care of. County will accept a few exhibits at this point. First of which, UCLC Exhibit 40. It's the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice, the 2014-2015 Edition. All right. Next exhibit will be UCLC Exhibit 44. Lansing Appraisal and Consulting Case Studies: Diminution Change in Price, February 2013. Next exhibit will be UCLC Exhibit 70. And that will be Appraisal Report: Property Value Impact and Zoning Compliance Evaluation, produced by McCann Appraisal and Consulting. Next exhibit will be the PowerPoint presentation Mr. McCann presented. It's UCLC Exhibit 71, entitled Property Value Impact and Zoning Compliance Evaluation. Next exhibit will be UCLC Exhibit 72, Wind Farm Residential Property Values and Rubber Rulers by Albert R. Wilson. Next exhibit, UCLC Exhibit 73, will be the Professional Profile, Albert R. Wilson CRE. Next exhibit will be the Complete Impact Study. It's UCLC Exhibit 74, entitled Impact of Industrial Wind Turbines on Residential Property Assessment in Ontario. Next exhibit, UCLC Exhibit 75, will be Sworn Testimony of Joseph Young before the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. I don't see a date on this. Application of Highland Wind Farm LLC for a Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity. Next exhibit, UCLC Exhibit 79, is a proposed property value guarantee agreement provided by Mr. McCann. Next exhibit has been Mark Schlegel, Exhibit 1, dated 2/17/15. Taken in evidence 2/17/15, actually dated from Country Financial, February 13, 2015, to value clients. Two pages goes on to include your revised farm umbrella liability coverage. All right, we've got that taken care of. We'll go ahead and get started where we left off last year. I promised Mr. Steiner that he would be up next. If that, Mr. Steiner, you can come up. All right, Mr. Steiner, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give in this case now and here shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have we got? All right. Please state your name and address for court report.
Brad Steiner, February 1. Okay, can everybody hear me okay? As I said, my name is Brad Steiner. I'm a real estate broker and have been for over eight years. I'm a member of the National Association of Realtors, the Bloomington Normal Association of Realtors, as well as the Livingston County Board of Realtors. My presentation tonight is going to talk about the impact of wind farm development on residential property in Livingston County. The two properties we're going to talk about, first of all, would be the Inver energy's application for the special use permit for the Pleasant Ridge. And the second one would be the wind farm owned by Yvagrola, named in Streeter Canyon the Ridge's South Wind Project. I'm not going to read all the details, although I think most of us are familiar with this wind farm in the northwest part of the county. Just to kind of give you a little overview of what I would like to talk about, the first area would be to review the current Pleasant Ridge exhibits, particularly ones on property value, and give a real estate opinion on some of those. The second would be to talk about a home sale study that I did in Livingston County from the assessor side over a 10-year period. The third area would be the current market conditions, basically from the Livingston County Board of Realtors, and just to show kind of the overall condition of the housing market in our area. And then the fourth area would be the taxable effects of wind development, and kind of a summary and a projection of what we could expect. So going into the first part of that, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Pleasant Ridge Exhibits 31 to 38. Mr. Thayer presented these as a co-author. Primarily, he talked about the LBNL studies from 2009 to 2013. Mr. Thayer is a professor at San Diego State University, and he said several times in different ways that he's not employed by the Department of Energy and he works for a university. And I did find that interesting, so I did want to point out another name that we've heard a little bit about, that would be Ben Home. Ben Home is a employee of the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory, and I got that from their website. Berkeley Lab is a member of the National Laboratory System supported by the US Department of Energy through its Office of Science. So I wanted to look a little bit about Mr. Home and what his connection could be on some of these exhibits. So first of all, I got a little chart here. Ben Home is the lead author on Exhibits 31 and 36. That would be the LBNL 2009-2013 Exhibits. He was also a co-author of Exhibit 37, which was a similar study than Massachusetts. And then there was two other Exhibits. Exhibit 32, I think that was Jennifer Hinman in McLean County, and then the Exhibit 33 in Lee County. There was a reference there of people that were instrumental in making the, getting the report to come to fruition, and it was not completed without his assistance, according to that. There were several names there listed. Another one I do want to point out is that Mr. Loomis was also identified as a key person in Exhibits 32 and 33. The next exhibit I want to talk briefly about is number 34, I call it the Lemsberg. That report relied mostly on meta-analysis, and I put the Webster, Merriam-Webster's definition up there of what that is. That is a quantitative statistical analysis of several separate but similar experiments or studies in order to test the pool data for statistical significance. And Wikipedia, I got to quote theirs, is basically is conducting research about previous research. What I found interesting when I got into that report is it was six reports that they referenced as part of their meta-analysis. You'll notice number 1, 2, 4, and 5 are Exhibits that have been 32, 35, 31, and 33. Number 3 is one that was written by Mr. Ben Home, that was part of his fulfillment for his Master's of Science degree in environmental policy. And then the sixth one, I didn't recognize any of the authors' names, but it did say later on in the comment, the careful review and comments were offered by certain people, and Ryan Weiser was a name there. And if that name sounds familiar, it could be because he was also the co-author of the The next one we're talking briefly is Exhibit 38, which is a Rhode Island study. Corey Lang did a presentation on this and talked about his motivation of doing this. Basically, what he says, Ben Home's presentation didn't necessarily apply to Rhode Island, and his goal was to do something similar as Ben Home for Rhode Island. And if you look at their results, a couple of things I want to point out, they utilize a DED methodology similar to ours. He's referring to his and Ben Home's. And similar to our results, he talked about the Home, that's the 2013 study, and basically saying they found the same results, and their target was, as he said, was to do something very similar to what they did previously. So if we're keeping track, we went through seven of the eight hedonic studies. This is the last one. What was interesting about this one is this is the only one that I think was quoted by McCann and by Inver Energy in their application. I got McCann's, he had put a chart on there that showed the varying degrees of loss of up to 45%. In their summary or their conclusion, I'm not quite sure what the report, those two quotes that I wanted to read. It says, "Overall, the results of this study are mixed as regards the effect of wind turbines on property value. When turbines do impact value, the magnitude of this effect depends on how close a home is to a turbine." Okay, briefly on the process of these first eight, it's a hedonic pricing method, or regression, or several things you could use for that. And Mr. Thayer went into great detail explaining that, and the difference between that and appraisal. But there was a couple of things that I wanted to point out, that what there are submissions and limitations of. One is the results depend heavily on model specification. Model specification addresses which independent variables will be included and will be excluded when they set up the initial model. And the second part of that is large amount of data must be gathered and manipulated. So basically, we create a model, and then we put the information into it in a way that the model is specified. Now, I will say, I don't know a lot about the hedonic pricing method. It's kind of new to me. From a real estate perspective, I would like to make a couple of comments on just on the overall reports. First of all, they make a claim that sales volume is not affected. In the real estate market, it's made up of active, expired, and sold listings. That is the key three, obviously, there's more than that. But if we don't utilize homes that sold, if we only utilize homes that sold in our report, and we don't put any reference to the market, we're missing a key part of the real estate market. The second part I want to point out is some of the changes from the 2009 to the 2013 study. They added Tom Jackson from Texas A&amp;M, and he is a licensed appraiser, is my understanding. But what I found ironic, from 2009 to 13, wind farms, most turbines have grown in height, and they made a decision to no longer consider visibility as a factor. Location, obviously, is a key part of a real estate, and I would say that visibility is a key part of location. I was kind of surprised to see that they would remove that from that as the wind turbines grew in size. And then the third part is statistically insignificant. Changes in property value have a significant effect on property owners. I put an example there, a $120,000 house. It could have a 5% gain or loss, either way would be a $6,000 difference. You know, in real estate, I've been with sellers and I've been with buyers, and I don't think if I ever sat down and says, you know, we're $6,000 apart, so it's statistically insignificant, I don't exactly think I'm going to get a good response from that whichever side of the table I'm on. But secondly, if you talk about home equity loans, refinancing, or short sales, $6,000 is oftentimes a difference between some being able to clear a sale, or talking to their lender about going into short sale. So I would say that, in my opinion, statistically insignificant is not a term in the real estate market that I would put a lot of weight into, because when we start talking percentages and dollars, we get into some pretty high numbers fairly quickly. So we've covered the eight hedonic report. I do want to talk about one more submitted by Mr. Maruz. He seems like an expert, I don't have any doubt of his credential and his ability. But I did want to point out a couple of things that I did, didn't quite understand where he uses data sets from. The first one was, he relied on the Midwest real estate data as his data source, and the Livingston County Board of Realtors, which would encompass most of the sales in our county, does not report to the MRED. So any data that was sold by a real estate agent licensed and belonging to the Livingston County Board of Realtors would not be there unless they belonged to another board, another area that would. So what the effect of that is, he's using about 19% to 15% of the readily accessible assessor's data. I'm comparing it with the Board of Realtors up top, but if he went to the assessor's data, he would have had a lot more to work with. And the line graph below is Exhibit 41 on page eight, he talked about Odell's sales. And what I did is, I just created a line graph from what, from his numbers. And what you'll see is, in 2007, the average home sale was, average home sale price was $151,633. 2008, it dropped to $86,583. $2,949,000, and so on. I think if you can, I think what I'm trying to get at here is, that's really not a good indication of what the Odell market is. We didn't really see over 100% swings in property values from one year to the next. The next thing I want to talk about is, both of these tables are from Exhibit 41, page five. We talked a little bit about central Illinois and northern Illinois. I want to go to the bottom table first for just a minute, but there's some key differences in our markets. One of the things they talked about was these communities, and we talk about list price, the average list price on here is, most of the time is double, or sometimes even triple what we would expect to see in Livingston County. The same with the size. Some of these communities would be half as big as our county as a whole, and obviously, with Chicago, we can all relate to how much bigger that would be to our county as a whole, too. And then the third part of that would be household income. While we are a strong county, we do lack some of the wages that our friends at the North probably have. But if you look to the right of that, it shows a 48-month percent change. And those numbers vary from 25 to, looks like about 54%. And we just don't see that fluctuation in Livingston County. I want to go back to the top chart, and I thought this was a very good chart, actually, because it shows the difference in Livingston County in comparison to the US. The blue line being central Illinois, I'm sorry, not Livingston County, central Illinois. And you look at how much more stable that line is in the US, I would say that the communities in the bottom chart would more closely reflect what he's presenting is in the US. One thing we did find some common ground on, I asked Mr. Maruz a question, I asked him, he said he was hired to research and investigate the validity of the statement, and the statement was property values will be affected. According to house sale data derived from the Livingston County Board of Realtor Statistics, the average residential property sale value in all of Livingston County was $97,468 in 2004. 10 years later, it is $97,269, a change of less than negative 2 tenths of a percent. Odell residential sale, house sales averaged $108,445 in 2004. 10 years later, the average is $80,375, a loss of 25.88%. Further study of Odell data shows the highest average house sale value was in 2009, before it dropped substantially over the next several years. The wind farm in Odell was operational in March of 2010. Loss of property values includes all residential house sales, not just real farms. And in asking Mr. Maruz some questions, he said that he did fact-check this statement to the source, and he did determine this to be generally accurate. Before we move into my report, I do want to go back to Pleasant Ridge Exhibit 39, Exhibit 39, page 31. This was a page that Mr. Thayer had put in, I think it was the last slide of his presentation. He talked about alternative literature, and I thought it was a good representation of what is required of it, and I wanted to kind of test that against my own information to see how I kind of fell in line with what he would consider to be good literature or not. So if I was going to break these down briefly, there's, going back, there's six areas I want to talk about each one individually real brief here. The first one, he talked about the small, unrepresentative, non-transferable samples, and the selection process is undefined. The report I'm going to get into in just a minute is, it includes 3,699 sales. I wouldn't consider that to be used, sales used, I wouldn't consider that to be small. It also includes all single-family arms league transactions in Livingston County, and there was no selection process. All sales are relevant in the county, and they were all included. The second one, anecdotal information. The summary is the only opinion I'm going to share, there's a lot of information there, but my opinion is not shared within the report. The third area would be the combination of sales appraisals and assessments. The only data that I used was from the assessor's sales record. And the next one, vacant land rather than residential homes. The way the system works, you put the criteria you're looking for, and it had to be a single-family residence when they came up in the report. And then insufficient controls for important influences. This, to me, is a very important one. The market is the greatest influence on residential property. What the buyer is willing to pay, that is the market, and that is the most important influence. So if we have that right, we should have everything else pretty much in order. And then inappropriate analytical methods. The basic approach that I'm using is the same that's used by the Census or the NAR or the HUD to talk about trends in real estate, whether it be monthly or quarterly, and a lot of these do publish information to keep people up to date on what the real estate market is currently doing. So to get into my report, as I said, there was 3,699 single-family owner-occupied arms league transactions in the 10-year period from 2004 to 2013. We'll get into the line graph in just a minute, but the communities that had at least 10 sales in each two-year period were shown individually. There were some smaller markets that had less than 10, and I grouped them together according to geographic location. Cropsy Strong, Chinon, and Gridley are kind of on the fringe part of those towns or other counties. So due to that, they did not have, they only had 60 sales total over the 10 years. I included that in the county average, but I did not show them individually or group them together because of the low number of sales. This is just to kind of give you an idea of what the market has done over the last 10 years. The top left is the average sale price in Livingston County, which would be all the sales. You can see we had, went up quite a bit from '04, '05 to the '06, '07, had a little bit down into the '08, '09, which would be in the housing bubble timeframe. We didn't see the drastic, you know, up and downs like we saw in the previous screens. And then we had lost a little bit from 2010, '11 into '12 and '13. But I want to point out a couple of things on this before I move on to the next screen. The bottom left, we've got the Northeast rural part, which would consist of, you know, Buckingham, Cabree, Campus, Colum, Edmonton, Kempton, Somme, and Reddick. We did see a little bit of a more drastic change in that, and I think part of that was the least amount of sales, right at the bottom, and I actually couldn't say exactly the least one, but they recorded some of the least amount of sales in that 2010 or 2011 period. And I think that would be a reason why they would see some of the fluctuation there that we didn't see elsewhere. But if you look at the bottom right corner, we've got Odell, Streeter, and the northwest rural part of the county. These three were consistently lower from the '08, '09 as we go on to the end of the year. The Streeter Canyon Wind Farm became operational in March of 2010. So what we attempted to do here is to take the period of 2004 and 2005 and compare that to the two-year term of 2008 to 2009, basically to show a market without any wind farm effect. And then we're going to do the opposite, we're going to go from '08 to '09 and go forward to 2012 and '13, and look at what the market, the wind farm could have had effect, and call that post-wind. One thing about our communities here, each community showed an increase in sale pre-wind, with the exception of Northwest, Northeast rural, which I mentioned that earlier, I think there was some limited sales that influenced that. Streeter, Odell, and Northwest rural part of the county experienced the highest and only double-digit losses post-wind, at 18%, 16%, and 12% respectively. And these three are all located within the general vicinity of the Streeter Canyon Ridge So this is just a chart breaking it down by community. We see what the county did as a whole. We had a 6% gain in the first part, a 1% loss in the second part. I mentioned the Northeast rural, how their fluctuation was, they actually gained $2,000 in average sales over the life of the 10 years, so they did kind of level out it as the big picture. But the ones in red, the concerning ones, were we have the 12%, 16%, and 18% loss, and that's where I said would make up that Northwest part of the county. One thing that I do want to point out about the Wind Farm project, we would expect to see, I shouldn't say we would expect, we've been told that we will see an increase in spending, we'll see an increase in, you know, your local grocery stores, your restaurants are going to get more money coming in, more revenue stream, and we would expect that to trickle into the housing market. And when we're losing 12%, 16%, and 18%, it just doesn't seem that the value of homes are going up there. Secondly, if there's employees at the wind farm, or people that are, you know, indirect employees possibly of that, we would expect that they would live in the general vicinity of that, which again should help the housing market in that region. The current market conditions in these areas is another thing I wanted to point out briefly. Current market conditions or monthly supply, basically what it is, is if no more homes go on the market today, how long is it going to take us to sell off our inventory? Housing, like many other things, is a supply and demand situation, so how long, what's it going to take if we just say, okay, nobody else is going to sell, but we just need to get rid of our inventory we have? Well, you'll notice on the chart here that Odell is the highest at 25, Streeter is second at 24, and Flanning is at 20. So basically, it's going to take longer to sell the inventory, these markets are much slower than anywhere else in the county. As far as what that number means, it varies from person to person. Some people would say that a three- to four-month supply is a good balance, some would say up to six or even more. In my opinion, our market is not as active, so probably a six or even higher would be normal, but we were going to struggle to move the inventory once we get over that, you know, 20 and 24-month timeframes. Okay, so based on the data that we put together there, there's twice 2,706 housing units in the townships that are affected in this Coyuna Ridge area. That's from the 2010 Census report. Combined, they lost an average of 15.26%. So that'll be $14,581 per home. If we could go across all of that, it would be a net loss of $39,456,186 in cash value in our residential homes in that part of the county. So the next part that I'd like to take a look at is Pleasant Ridge Wind Farm, and how, if the effects that we've seen in the northwest part of the county are in fact due to the wind farm, and there's lots of other variables that could be, I know that Dwight Prison has been mentioned, it's an possible influence. I don't think it closed until early '13, so it would be limited, and the surrounding markets of Pontiac and Dwight both went up in value at that same time period, so I think we need to look into something a little bit more specific in that region to find some of those other factors. But if we have the same effect with the Pleasant Ridge Wind Farm on the nine townships that are listed there, we've got a few more homes on this side of the county, we've got 3,684 housing units in this area. Average sale price was $92,774 for the 2012 to '13 period. So in order to kind of project the EAP, the equalized assessment value, we have to put in some built-in assumptions. First of all, one assumption would be that the wind farm is not constructed, and property values in the nine township area increased by 2.2% per year. The second one is the wind farm is taxable, and obviously, it's constructed. Wind farm is taxable in 2016 with a fair cash value of just over $106 million for the first year, followed by a 2.2% inflation adjustment and a 4% depreciation until a maximum of 70%. first year, followed by a 2.2% inflation adjustment and a 4% depreciation until a maximum 70%. That formula is state mandated. It's anywhere in Illinois, Illinois, that is what they use. The county doesn't have a say in how that is calculated. And then another part of that would be we take that nine township area, if they experience a 5% loss for the first three years and then a 1% loss the fourth year and remain flat the fifth, they'd have a cumulative loss of 15.12%, which would actually be a little bit less than the 15.26 we've seen in the Streeter Coyuga Ridge loss. One thing I want to point out, the 2.2% that I used in the first one, I used the same number that was used for inflation. Obviously, home sales are, home values are not going to follow inflation, but just to keep everything uniform, I just use that same number on both charts. Okay, so in order to do this, we're going to take a look at four different areas of this. The first one is column one. Actually, if you look at Lewis, I'm not sure what exhibit it is, but table five in his exhibit, you'll find that these are the exact same numbers. This is what he is projecting the E A V to be for each year going out 20 years. He went a little bit further, but I stopped at 20. So those numbers would be right from his report. Column two is what we would, what the residential value with the project would be. The first three years, as I said, we would reduce it and then we would have a flat year and then it would go back up at the same rate of 2.2%. The third column would be to combine the taxable value of the wind farm along with the residential to get an impact of what that's going to do to it. And then the fourth column is basically just what our housing is now adding the 2.2% and where it would go over to 20 years. Okay, the bar graph here, you got to read in the blue line. First of all, the red line is what the residential and wind farm values combined would be over the 20-year period. You see we start substantially higher and then we decrease quickly. Couple of reasons for that. First of all is the home values, we're trying to project the loss that we've experienced in the other part of the county into this. But the second part is, is wind turbines depreciate every year. The only way they wouldn't depreciate is if our inflation went over 4% each year. So we take off, we add inflation and we take off a 4% depreciation. And if we go over 4% with the inflation, we've probably got some other concerns at the same time. The blue line would be representative of what our property values would do if we don't have any wind farm build and we continue to gain value with that 2.2% as I mentioned before. In the conclusion there, you'll see that by 2022, the E A V without the project will actually exceed the project, the E A V with the project. And over the life of the project, over 20 years, we'll actually have a cumulative loss of over 84 million with the project versus without the project. And then thirdly, any loss in residential property value over 11.5% would result in a net loss of E A V over the 20 years of the project. So in summary, the Streeter Coyuga Ridge Farm is less than five years old. Wind energy is relatively new. I think some of the effects we haven't seen, obviously the homes on the market is an indication that we probably haven't reached all of the issues where we could be going with that. Second part is perception. People in some areas do not feel that a wind farm is something they want to live by. Until that changes or we find a way to stop that, that perception, it's going to be a challenge to raise the value of homes in those markets. The results I'm talking about are strictly residential, but I think there's a lot of things existing with residential. But there's a lot of other factors to this. New construction being one. Whether it be somebody that was going to build a new house and has put the project on hold, or somebody who's going to remodel that on a deck or a patio, that would be spending some money to buy materials and, you know, some labor of some sort possibly. Those are the things that are going to be affected on and if they, if they don't feel comfortable or aren't able to do that. The second part is participating and non-participating. Landowners might find that the property is too close to the turbine, making the dream home or subdividing or any other sale impossible because they would be in that area that's regulated by the setbacks that the county has. Or they could just be that they're in the general safety area of being too close to the turbine. The next part would be communities that reduce the setbacks. One of the things that's concerning about this is in the, on the blank on the, the Heseman Tunnel Report, they did talk about the effect of, of the wind farms are greater the closer we get to it. So if we reduce the setbacks and we let them come closer to our communities, we could probably expect according to their study that we'd have a greater residential property loss and heavier impact in those areas. Secondly, if we do build those within a half a mile or a mile of a community, the area between the community and that wind turbine is really restricted as to what can be developed there. There's some safety issues from where you put things and there's some setbacks that are obviously going to dictate what can and can't be done there. And in closing, counties across the state are making their wind ordinance more restrictive. I think that's, we've seen that common in many areas. And I think that these counties will become the premier place to build, for people who want to live in the country, quiet setting. So if people want to live in the country, they want to enjoy, enjoy the outdoors and then the peaceful nature that we've had in our county, they are going to find that wherever they can. And hopefully that will be Livingston County, but if we continue to build wind farms, it might influence their decision and possibly encourage them to move elsewhere. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from any units of local government in the audience? If you could identify yourselves and, and local government that you represent, please.
Yes, I'm Mark Tykle, a member of the Prairie Central Board of Education. I'd like to make a quick statement here if I could, just a little short one before I start asking any questions that are. Just to explain my position here a little bit. Okay, we were asked back in August to if we would want to take a stance on this and then had some informational meetings in September, then October, we decided not to take a stance on it. And at that same time, we decided as school board members, that any of these, we should not force our opinion as a school board member, but as an individual citizen, we could do that. So I'm not here to ask questions as a school board member, but if anything comes off as an opinion, I want it to be known that it's not necessarily that of the school board of my own, just because I don't, I don't want something put in the local press that the school board said to us that I had this. Is that clear?
It is, but you'll have an opportunity to question as an, as an individual.
I agree with your question, but you think as an individual now. I just didn't, if I asked something, it could come off as I maybe forcing an opinion one way or another.
Okay, you've represented yourself though as, as an, as an individual representing the local school board.
Yes, and these questions will be as it concerns the board member.
Continue.
Okay, while you were showing some of those figures, I tried to do a little bit of math real quick. In my understanding, you're right, you said that our equalized accessibility over the life of the, 20-year life of the project, we could see an 84,000,217,000 dollar loss, is that correct?
Sounds about right, it was 84 million, it needs to change, yeah.
Okay. So according to my calculations, as our, at our tax rate, are you saying that we could see a $3.3 million loss?
I didn't do the math on it, but the E A, the school funding has a direct relationship with the, with the E A V. As E A V goes down, I think it's just over 4% goes to the Prairie Central School District. So if that's in the numbers, yeah, that sounds about right to what that loss could be.
That's what I, I used the 4%, but I just, I know we're just a little bit above that, but I just wanted to be clear on that. And then that wouldn't even be taken into consideration, the fact that the state will reduce their funding the first year roughly over a little, a little over a million dollars. Because if local values go up, they adjust their rate according to what, what we get locally. So we could actually see that loss yet on top of.
Yeah, I don't want to go too much into the school funding, it's pretty complex and I'm not sure I can do that justice. But basically, my understanding is to take the E A V first, that information is sent to the state and then they have a formula based on what the E A V is and how much money would go back to the schools. Other factors could be attendance or low income, different factors that go into that. But the starting point is the E A V of the county.
Right, okay. And you think like in your opinion, I know there's some other school districts that have wind farms in their area that are, I know like one of the bridge views entertaining the idea of a tax referendum to support funding. So the extra revenue that we're hearing about from the wind farms maybe isn't all, it's really a crackback to me.
I guess I wouldn't know their situation well enough to have an opinion on that.
And basically, I guess that what I'm asking you, it could make us that much more dependent on the state.
Absolutely. If E A V goes down instead of up, like I said, the relationship is based on that. So we were asked the state for more money as we have less E A V. We want to raise our E A V, it'd be less of that on the state, which could have a reverse effect if it goes the other direction.
Okay. And then you did mention just briefly about maybe some less new homes. None of that was taken into consideration though, it started here.
No, the study goes over 10 years and it's only homes that sold in that 10-year period. Now, I have heard of several people that have talked about not building or put on plans on hold. So that is, that isn't having an effect on the residential market, but it's not shown here.
Yep, okay, no further questions.
Any other units of local government with questions? All right. Mr. Blazer, do you have any questions for our applicant?
I assume you're for this witness, yes, I'm good.
Yes.
Mr. Steiner, have you ever conducted a school funding analysis?
I've not.
Are you conversant with the methodology by which school funding is determined?
No, as I stated in talking to Mr. Slaila, then no, I'm not.
Okay. And I assume this, have you ever done an E A V analysis or a county life level?
It's a pretty basic process, so.
Have you ever done it before?
This would be the first one specifically for Livingston County, yes.
For any county?
No, I'm not.
All right. And this drop in E A V that you suggest, obviously that's based on your assumption.
There's no assumption on it, but based on what the residential prices did. E A V is calculated from the residential sale price. It's a third of the value, it's a simple calculation. No, my opinion's not in that.
I'm talking about your opinion regarding future loss of the E A V. That's based on your assumption about future losses of property values, correct?
Yeah, it's basically trying to project it from what we've already seen.
I see. In your third slide, we don't need to put on that company, but evidently, as I understand it, you based your, or you got your information as recorded by the Livingston County Assessor's Office, is that correct? Mr. Steiner, I handed you what's been marked as Pleasant Ridge exhibit 184, which is entitled Standard Mass Appraisal of Real Property. Have you ever seen this before?
No, I'm not.
Do you know what it is?
It looks about, something about appraisals, but not a licensed appraiser.
Well, it's actually from the International Association of Assessing Officers, but the basic question is, you don't know what this is, you've never seen it before, and obviously you've never read it, correct? I think you said you're a member of the local board of Realtors, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you know what C D O M is?
I'm sorry?
C D O M, do you know what that is?
C D O M?
Yeah.
No. It's a abbreviation, something, I'm not exactly sure what you're.
Community that is on the market, does that sound like?
We call it D O M, that's what our M L S system, we have an L C, but yeah, days on the market.
Correct.
Yeah.
And what do you mean by your M L S system?
The Livingston County Board of Realtors typically presents it as D O M instead of C D O M.
So for example, if an appraiser wanted to find out D O M or C D O M, whichever way you call it.
Sure.
The Livingston County M L S contains that information, right?
Yes, it does.
Do you know what an appraisal review is?
Not an appraiser.
We understand that, I'm just wondering if you know what an appraisal review is.
That's a pretty broad question. I guess I wouldn't speculate as to what an appraisal review is.
Remember, you gave a presentation to the Z B A a few months ago, do you recall that?
I do.
And you indicated at that time that you're not a full-time real estate broker. Is that, is that still the case?
I have more than one occupation, if that's a fair statement.
And as I recall from the prior presentation, I think you've also indicated that you don't do work in the Odell area, is that correct, as a broker?
Personally, I don't. The firm that I represent is one of the largest in Livingston County, they would, but personally, I would typically drive to Odell to show or list a home. And I really, that's not even the scope of most of my work at this, at this time.
Okay. And I believe you said at that meeting that if you do have, if somebody came to you with an Odell listing, you'd refer it to another broker, right?
Most likely, yeah.
Okay. So if I asked you, how many foreclosures are currently pending in Odell, I assume you would have no idea?
I could find out, but I wouldn't be able to answer off the top of my head, no.
And if I asked you how many foreclosures are currently pending in Odell that were owned by former employees of the Dwight Correctional Center, I suppose you wouldn't know that either?
No, I would not.
Would I have to go to a local broker to find that out?
You know, that's a pretty, they're going to have to know every person in there. And you take a community like Odell, you're going to have at least three or four different agencies that are working in that community. It's going to take quite a bit of work to track down who each individual owner is, what their occupation is, and why they might be moving out of the area.
Going back again to the Z B A meeting from a few months ago, you submitted a report then, do you remember that?
Yeah.
Somewhat similar to the presentation you gave today, remember that?
There's a few things that are similar, yeah.
In terms of the impacts that you say occurred from the Coyuga Ridge Wind Farm, do you recall in that report, you included what you thought was the impact from the approval of the Deer Run project?
Yeah, the Deer Run project was never actually constructed, but it does fit in the footprint, it was approved, so we could have some buyers that feel that it's an issue to them.
And the numbers that you reflected today, I was trying to compare to your report and what you showed today, they look very similar. Are the numbers that you presented today the same numbers that you presented a few months ago to the Z B A?
I believe they are.
So they included what you determined to be the impact from the approval of the Deer Run project?
Not specifically, it's, I guess I referred to it more in the Northwest part of the county and obviously the Deer Run Coyuga South project fits in that Northwest part of the county.
Correct.
I'm not making any claim that the exact footprint is what I'm presenting, I'm just making a general assumption of the market in that area.
So your numbers include your assumption about what the impact was from the approval of that Deer Run project, correct?
The approval of that project and the construction of the Streeter Coyuga Ridge South project, yeah. And there's other factors, as I mentioned in my report.
Correct. And I think, I think you just said it, but just to be clear, everybody knows the Deer Run project was never built, right? In, in your slide number 22, you say that the three communities in areas mentioned earlier as being in the Streeter Coyuga Ridge area had a combined average home sales loss of a certain percentage.
The 15.26%.
Right. And you called this a combined average home sale loss. So you, you basically, you took a cluster of all the homes and came up with an average? Is that what you did? So you basically, you took a cluster of all the homes and came up with an average, is that what you did?
Not just a cluster of any homes, those three specific areas.
Right, but you put them all together and then came up with an average?
Yes, it was a difference between the timeframes, the two-year increments.
Right. And then in that same slide, you say, assuming an equal loss in value for all units in the seven township area, this is a net loss of thirty-nine million and change in tax and value, right? Is that what you said in here on slide twenty-two?
I believe you're right, correct, yeah.
And again, this is based on your averaging of a cluster of homes, correct?
Correct.
Just as an example, would you agree with me that if I take two houses, one selling for a hundred and thirty-five thousand and one for a hundred and fifty-five thousand, the average of those two would be a hundred and forty-five thousand, right?
I agree.
And if I have two other houses, one selling for ninety-five thousand and the other one selling for a hundred and ninety-five thousand, those two would also average a hundred and forty-five thousand, right?
Sure.
All right, I'm gonna read you a list of property characteristics. And for each of them, I want you to tell me if you think they're important in predicting residential property values. And they actually divide into three different areas. Now, the first one is improvement data. Do you think living area is important in predicting residential property values?
So it's a factor, yeah.
How about construction quality or key components of construction?
Sure.
Effective age or condition?
Sure.
Building designer style?
Yes.
Secondary areas, including basements, garages, covered porches, and balconies?
Sure.
Building features such as bathrooms and central air conditioning?
Sure.
Significant detached structures, including guesthouses, boathouses, and barns?
Could be a factor, yeah.
Okay. Second one's land data. Is lot size important in predicting residential property values?
Sure.
Available utilities?
Yes.
And the third one would be location data. Is market data important in predicting residential property values?
I'm not sure if I'm...
Market area, I'm sorry.
Market area?
Market data, yeah, market area.
Sure, yeah.
How about the sub-market area or neighborhood, is that important?
They'll have an effect.
Site of entities, like particular views, let's say water views, for example, would that be important?
Again, in fact.
All right, on your slide twenty-six, you said counties across the state are making their wind ordinances more restrictive to protect property values and guard against other issues. Did I quote you correctly on that one?
Sounds cool, so I can say it.
Who told you that?
Just from what I've seen.
Where have you seen that?
I've seen several counties in our surrounding area that have made their zoning more restrictive.
And which counties are those?
I believe Nervoye County has made changes to their ordinance. I believe Champagne has, and I can't, I'd have to look back to see exactly which ones, but I couldn't give you a good list at this point.
You also said on your slide twenty-six, it's your second bullet, "Perception of wind farms will be a key factor in how much more loss could be realized before the market stabilizes." Does that sound right, that's what you said?
Sure.
And I think you said, when you were talking about that statement in your slide, that until we find a way to change the perception, that I think you said the impacts will continue or something like that, does that sound like what you said?
Yeah.
I was trying to write this faster.
Yeah, basically what I'm saying is, if my report is based, that the effects are because of the wind farm, then we do have some adverse effects from that, and we would need to address that somehow.
So you need to address the perception.
Perception is a key element of everything, yeah.
So for example, if somebody provides false information that leads potential buyers to believe their investment in property near a wind farm is a bad idea, property values can go down, right? Could you repeat the question?
Sure, sure.
Would you mind reading that one back, I want to get to it justice again.
So for example, if somebody provides false information that leads potential buyers to believe their investment in property near a wind farm is a bad idea, property values can go down, right?
Yes, that would be correct.
That's all I have on the table.
Mr. Lupeans?
If, if over two thousand people signed a petition against the wind farm, does that, in your, that in your mind affects value?
Objection, assumes facts, not an evidence.
It's hypothetical? As is your statement that there were false statements that were led into, false statements of wind farms, that's the same thing.
We've been through this multiple times, Mr. Cornell, that assumes facts, not an evidence. There's no evidence in this record of any such petition signed.
There won't be one.
Can you restate the question without using the premise of a petition?
If over two thousand people in the area of the proposed wind farm believed that it was going to be harmful, would that affect the value of the perception and value of the real estate?
Again, assumes facts, not an evidence. We have no evidence that over two thousand people anywhere have any opinion about this wind farm.
You're going to, I can promise you that.
Okay.
I have over two thousand signatures waiting for me.
All right, well then, you know what, let's swear, Mr. Luca hands in, now he's testifying.
And you have testified about sixteen times.
Okay, all right. We're striking the question, move on to the next one.
If a large number of people believe that wind farms were improper, were affected home values, would that actually affect home values?
Same objection.
It's the exact same question he asked three minutes ago.
Don't say it.
It's the same premise, it's just the exact opposite.
Same objection.
Move on. Move on to another question.
Do people's, do people's perception of whether a wind farm is good or bad, in your opinion, affect value?
Yes, it does. If people have a perception of something, be it a wind farm or be it a... I'll give an example of a house that's been on the market for two to three years. It can have an image of that there's an issue with that house. And by having that, it creates that perception that there's something wrong, and it's gonna draw people away from it. And the same would be true of that. If people have a misperception or a negative opinion of what a wind farm is going to do, they're gonna steer clear of that, or they may not be as willing to put themselves out to purchase property in that area.
How many people live in Livingston County? Approximately thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand, I've been guessing, is around that area.
And of those, a certain percentage are under eighteen, etc.
Sure.
Nothing for...
Do they have any interesting parties, parties in the audience that would like to ask Mr. Steiner any questions? Anybody out there? See anybody? Do we have any questions for Mr. Steiner? Chuck, you have a question? Okay. Okay, why don't you?
Going to the bottom of page eighteen of your, from your slides, your last sentence states that Streeter, Odell, Northwest Corral experienced the highest and only double-digit losses, etc. The last sentence is, these three areas are all located within the footprint of the Streeter Cayuga Ridge Project. Could you clarify and consider how Streeter, the northwest area, plays the county's part of the Streeter Cayuga Ridge footprint?
Well, as I said before, I'm not specifically talking about the exact footprint. We're talking the general vicinity, and you could do the same thing with the different townships that I've mentioned, and kind of come to that same conclusion.
So it's not footprint, it's all...
I don't believe that the Northwest Corral, Streeter, and Odell addresses would match an exact footprint of that wind project, no?
So can you kind of clarify exactly what you're trying to get at?
Okay, sure. As I said before, this is not a, it's a target for the northwest part of the county. Anywhere that Streeter Cayuga Ridge Project. Now, in order to, to get the exact footprint, that would take some extensive work, because we'd have to take each community and get their exact areas. If you go to the... Sorry, I thought I had one of the previous slides, but the Streeter Cayuga Ridge Wind Project, there is certain townships that it is encompassed in. And I think you would find a very similar overlay of those townships in the communities that I mentioned. Do you have any other questions, Rashim?
I have no more questions.
Okay. Any other members of the EBA questions? All right, I just have two. Have you, have you listed any homes within, within the footprint?
No, as I said before, if something did come to you from that market, I'd probably refer to someone else.
Okay, so I can assume, in a, in a currently built... I can assume you haven't sold any homes within the footprint either, be it Cayuga Ridge or, or any other developments?
I've sold homes in, you know, February first to Strawn, Chautauqua, Shenone, Pontiac. I don't do a lot of business on the northwest side of the county. Basically, what I'm presenting here is not any market data, it's more a history of what's been done over the last ten years.
Okay, all right. All right, we're good. Nope. Nope. You missed your opportunity. All right. Thank you, Mr. Steiner. All right, I've got seven thirty three, why don't you go ahead and speak ten minutes real quick, yes, nice. So I do appreciate everybody listening and really trying to hold your testimony around this so that we can have testimony that's kind of focused on how we look at the issue. All right. With that, we're gonna call Dan Beek, actually, Mr. Lupeans, we call Dan Beek, but, all right. Dan B-I-E-C-K, you're here, if you can come forward.
For the record, Mr. Beek is not, is not one of my clients, we're not calling him, we're just, he's asking to testify, so...
Very good, okay, all right. All right, Mr. Beek, could you please raise your hand? If you swear that the testimony you shall give in this case now and here shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, can you please state your name and address for a court reporter, and you may go ahead.
I'm Dr. Dan Beek, I'm resident there in the Hattlesburg Hospital in Blackstone, Illinois. I address two nine two zero five, North eleven hundred East Road, Blackstone, Illinois, six thirteen thirteen. I'd just like to take the opportunity, first and foremost, provide a, a counter view from a medical aspect as far as wind energy's viewpoints of remote conduct that they brought in early in the ZBA hearings, and also bring up a couple of other points that they failed to bring up. First off, and I fail to remember the doctor's name, the first two doctors they brought in had made the comments that the medical community as a whole cannot agree that the wind turbines are not
No.
a health risk. Some say they are, but some say they're not. But that also means the medical community does not totally agree that they're not a human health hazard. From the numbers that have been thrown away during the ZBA hearings, sometimes they're throwing out fifteen percent of people do suffer from wind turbine syndrome to five percent, one percent. Even if we just say one percent of people actually have a medical condition secondary to the wind turbine syndrome. We had two people in the Pontiac hearing just a few weeks, talking about the problems that they were having. Do we really want to have something that the medical community can't agree is safe? Do we really want to start building and adding more things that the medical community cannot consider to be safe? Do we do that with anything else? Cars? Are we going to approve a car that, okay, one percent of the time, the brakes don't work? Well, maybe they only work a little bit, okay, but it's just in your head, okay? Are we gonna allow that to occur as a society, as a community? No, we're not. Then why are we going to allow something that we can't even agree that is safe to come up in our neighborhoods? Second, the first doctor, the medical doctor that came up from the wind turbines, he reported that their complaint with most people that complain of sickness due to the wind turbines was likely due to what's called the placebo effect. They thought the wind turbines could cause sickness, thus they made themselves sick. The point is, they still felt sick, okay? The purpose of a placebo, the purpose of an experiment is you have a control. From the medical community, we use that control to find out whether a certain drug has a certain effect or not. The way we use the control is we give a certain percentage of people, animals, or whatever the situation is, the drug, but actually don't give it to them. It looks like the drug, it's a pill, but there's nothing in it, it's called a placebo. And a very small percentage of those people really want to feel better. So they take it, think it's an actual drug, and they make themselves feel better. It's called the placebo effect. It's a very small percentage of people, but you use that to go against the actual drug, and the other group that actually got the medicine, and did it make a statistical significant difference. Here's the major problem, though. During an experiment, the stimulus, the pill that caused the placebo effect, goes away. You put the turbines up, they're not going away. So whether it's a placebo effect or not, the people still feel bad. Whether they're truly having increased pressure around the ears, whether they're truly having vertigo, or whatever their complaint is, they're still having a placebo effect. So unless wind energy wants to start hiring thousands of psychologists to convince these people it's still in their head, the problem's still there. And once again, do we want to have turbines coming in, whether it's a truly medical condition or not, or a placebo effect? Does that still make it okay? It's just in their head. Okay, it's just in their head for the next twenty years, thirty years, forty years. Is that healthy? No, it's not. Is that fair? No, it's not. Second, or third, the second doctor mentioned that a study showed that there was no direct effect, direct medical effect on people. But both doctors agreed that fifteen to forty-five percent, depending on the study they looked at, of the people near the turbines were annoyed by them. Here's the problem, it comes into the same group, they're annoyed. I'm sure as heck they're annoyed that wind turbines might mean, I think, that the Jordan Fulton here would feel that way. To me, every day I go home, and my son says ruined, my sunrise is ruined, that's my move here. Two thousand nine, you know where I was living? Five minutes from the Friggin' Beach. I moved to the Midwest for morals and ethics for my six-year-old son. And I come smacked out in the middle of this, okay? I could have moved to Streeter, Pontiac, but I wanted to live out of the country. For the view, to look at God's country, not wind turbines. And now I'm potentially gonna lose that, okay? Sure, I'm speaking, sure, it's going to annoy me to say the least, okay? Related to an abusive relationship. Husband's immensely abusing his wife. Related to an abusive relationship, husband's mentally abusing his wife. Is he poking her in the middle of the night waking her up? No. Is he giving her any physical abuse? No, he's mentally abusive. What's probably going to happen to her? Why ask anyone that's in the relationship? Headaches, sleepless nights, potentially chronic diarrhea, other fun enjoyable things like that. Is he doing that to her physically? No, he is not. Is the emotional stress of being annoyed and irritated by him chronically, is that doing that to the woman? Sure as heck is. And along the line, same lines of that. They also had a speaker, a women speaker that came up and said people's quality of life is not damaged. And they used certain markers to determine whether the quality of life was damaged or not. Talks about whether they maintained their house, was their income changed, did they lose their job, did they get divorced? Now, I don't know if it is for sure, so I can't say 100% whether that's study or not, but they ever mentioned, did they like the windmills? What, the wind turbines, I should say. Did they appreciate them being there? Did they want them there? Well, obviously, 15, 45% chronically annoyed. So, for me, from a medical standpoint, and from a personal standpoint, being chronically annoyed in your own house, how is that not a decrease in your quality of life? My income didn't change, I had the same job, I didn't get divorced, my kid's still in school. I don't see how that can tell me whether I'm having a good quality of life or not. And then it comes into more of a personal standpoint for me, from a veterinarian aspect. A lot of life, okay? Unfortunately, when I moved out here, I was expecting to see a lot more wildlife, but there's few and far between pheasants out here because a lot of the hedgerows are gone, okay? So our habitat is already diminished out here. One of the speakers talked about wildlife and the effects of the wind turbines on them. He mentioned a Polish study that showed that the geese raised near the turbines had lower growth rates and higher levels of cortisol. The L O A levels of cortisol is evidence of the stress in the body, thus lower growth rates. He mentioned that the fart of the geese were away unless the effect was, and he issued a sign. A couple of things that he failed to mention, this is done over just a few weeks. How about years of exposure? We don't have any of those, any studies like that, okay? The negative effects would continue. How about a newborn baby? If it's going to cause an effect on the goose, how about a child? We don't have any research on that, measuring cortisol levels in people, okay? He also failed to mention specifically the cortisol levels, which is unhealthy when it becomes elevated. The cortisol levels in both breeds progressively increased with time, no matter whether within 50 meters or 500 meters from the turbines. There's some very scary things for me from a medical aspect. Between week five of exposure and week 17 of exposure, the cortisol levels in the geese from 50 meters, I know that's close, okay, but it's wildlife. They don't care how close they are, or sometimes they do. In this case, they're confined there. 50 meters away, in just 12 weeks, their cortisol level tripled. Tripled? That's crazy. An interesting point Wind Energy failed to mention also was that even the geese 500 meters away, in the same period of time, their cortisol levels doubled. So yes, there is a direct effect on the turbines that causes stress on animals. Human beings are animals also. It was not in the geese's heads. They actually had physical stress, cortisol levels go up. Another fun little tidbit that the gentleman, they'd like to point out, and if this doesn't raise a red flag to the ZBA or the county board, then they need to check themselves for a pulse. This is directly from the aspect, and I quote, "Lower activity and some disturbing changes in behavior of animals from Group 1 was noted." It changed their behavior. If that doesn't send chills up your spine, I don't know what will. Reporting something in the ground that's never going to go away, that's actually changing behavior in birds. How about in people? Okay, yes, give us a footprint. How far away is truly safe? Do we really have enough research to say, "This is okay for my six-year-old son"? I sure as heck, I don't have enough information for me to say that. If it's willing to do this to birds, how about a lifelong living in a farm that's been in there four generations and the family doesn't want to sell? That's my greater concern from the medical aspect. We don't have enough information. I'm not necessarily against conservative energy, or alternative energy, or windmills, or wind turbines. There's just not enough evidence here to continue to do it. Every other month, there's a new study coming out that scares the dickens out of me. Earlier, a witness from the research showed that there was no significant birds by the wind turbines. I think this was day one, day two of the ZBA hearings, and they were trying to prove whether the wind turbines were actually damaging birds, bats, whatnot. Personally, from a medical aspect, I think it depends on the bird. Some birds will avoid it, some will not. Their point was there's very little bird action by the wind turbines, as proof in the pudding. No, there's no birds, not going to cause that much damage. Red flag, why are there no birds by the wind turbines? They're avoiding them, okay? Give you guys an abstract. Avoidance behavior by prairie grouse implications for development of wind energy. This is by a conservative biology, the Journal of Society for Conservation Biology. I'll read you a quick abstract, I have the whole thing if you want to look at it. New wind energy facilities and their associated power transmission lines and roads are being constructed at a rapid rate in the Great Plains of North America. Nevertheless, little is known about the possible negative effects on those anthropogenic features might have on prairie birds, one of the most threatened birds in North America. We examined radio telemetry tracking locations of lesser prairie chickens and greater prairie chickens in two locations in Oklahoma to determine whether these birds avoided or changed movement behavior near power lines or paved highways. We tracked 463 lesser prairie chickens, 216 greater prairie chickens, for seven and three years, respectively. Individually, both species avoided power lines by at least 100 meters, and lesser prairie chickens avoided one or two highways by 100 meters. The prairie chickens crossed power lines less often than expected if birds moved randomly, but it did not appear to perceive highways as in movement barrier. In addition, home ranges of lesser prairie chickens overlapped the power lines less often than would be expected by chance placement of home ranges. This result was supported by a kernel density estimation of home ranges. It is likely that new power lines and all tall structures, such as wind turbines, will lead to avoidance of previously suitable habitat and will serve as a barrier to movement. These two factors will likely increase fragmentation in an already fragmented landscape of wind energy development continues. So one of the big pushes for wind energy is to be recurring, no CO2 emissions. It's not very green when you're reducing the habitat of almost an endangered species, let alone all of the potential wildlife there. Potentially, the reason why they didn't find any birds in that one study is all the birds were running through the hills to get away from them. One last thing. A new report came out from Wind Council for Nature. Peer-reviewed study shatters claim that wind turbines are safe. In a groundbreaking study at Pacific Hydro's Cape Bridgewater Farm in the state of Victoria, Australia's leading acoustic engineer, Stephen Cooper, found a unique infrasound pattern, which he labeled "wind turbine signature," and previous studies correlate with the occurrence and severity of symptoms of residents who have complained of often unbearable sensations. These include sleep disturbance, headaches, heart racing, pressure in the head, ears, or chest, as described by residents, symptoms generally known as wind turbine syndrome. The wind turbine signature cannot be detected using traditional measuring indexes. Narrowband analysis must be used instead. He suggests that medical studies be conducted using these new measurements in order to determine the threshold of what is unacceptable in the terms of sound pressure level. Another conclusion of the study is that the Danish method used for the measure of low-frequency noise annoyance near wind farms is inadequate. So are the wind turbine noise standards applied to wind farms in Victoria, Australia, and New Zealand, known as the New Zealand Standard. Just as inadequate are all other standards regulating annoyance near wind farms around the world. They simply do not take infrasound into account. And the list of doctors up here is, you know, about 10 different doctors on the research study here. In closing, from a medical aspect, cortisol level, it's just not healthy. It's just not healthy to cause the cortisol levels and anything to go up, okay? And for anyone to say that's wrong, then they need to make sure they have the right letters behind their last name. Mine says D V, I'm doctor of veterinary medicine. No, it's not M D, but we're veterinarians, we're not simply just restricted to one species. We do them all. Thank you.
Just one question, I have. Do humans have cortisol?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All males are basically the same in that aspect.
All right. Any units of local government out there? Nothing. Either one of you guys? Mr. Blazer, you have any? Mr. Lupians?
Yes.
Nothing. Audience? Any questions from the audience?
Going on?
Brad Sager. Mr. Beek, you said you moved here in 2009, is that correct?
August 2010.
August 2010, okay. Were you aware of any discussion of wind turbines at that time?
Not at all.
Would it influence your decision to move and open, or assume the practice, I'm not sure exactly whether it would be open practice or assume one? Would that, knowing that, then influence your decision?
There's no way, living, you know what, I would have lost half the sales if I knew we would have been surrounded by wind turbines.
Any other members of the audience have any questions? Yeah, I'm back here.
Bureau of Customs, Strong. I guess I have a question. With pheasants?
Yes.
In your opinion, your veterinarian, if windmills were put up around a habitat, we had a better population?
The pheasants and the prairie grouse are very similar from a bird standpoint. If the prairie grouse were going to avoid them, to me, if medical logic would say, any other low-lying birds like pheasants, quail, yes, they would probably run through the hills. Yeah.
Okay. Any other members of the audience have any questions for Dr. Beek? Anybody? Come and say anything? Thank you. I'd like to get Lance Yedna to come forward. Please be here this evening. Mr. Yedna, can you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give in this case now and here shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self of you?
I do.
All right, please state your name and address for a court reporter.
I'm Lance Yedna, spelled by B-I-N-O-C-K. I'm from Champlain Street, I'm sorry, Circle Drive in Ottawa, Illinois. I obviously can't speak about the values of homes or anything like that, I'm not an expert on that. But what I am is I represent construction orders, specifically heavy equipment operators. And I myself was on a few wind projects in LaSalle County, Bureau County, Lee County over the years, especially during the recession that was really good for a lot of us. And I only wanted to speak about some of the things from LaSalle County and my own personal experience on that, and foreign members of my trade association. In general, I'll say this, I just took off the top of my head eight members of, eight members of Livingston County who I worked with in 2009 through, let's say, 2011 on a couple of the wind projects north. And those eight, like I said, they lived down here in Livingston County, and I did a total of their hours on these projects. Some of them had a lot of hours, some of them had not quite as many. But in total, $850,000 was their total wages and fringe benefits, et cetera, on a couple of those wind projects. Obviously, it was a very large amount of money for the members of, you know, my trade association that we worked there. And again, I'm only speaking about the economics of it. It meant a lot to many of us up there because that was during the recession when they started building these, and it was really important for all of us because I was traveling myself personally to Michigan, to Iowa, and Wisconsin to find work during that time. And many of your members that lived down here, members I should say, my local that lived down here, they were having to travel just as well as I was, I just live in South County to the north. Also, one or two of the contractors down here, they had some work on some wind farms of the Kuyu Ridge. His revenue himself was about $400,000 on that one particular project, and it was a very small part of it. He has six or seven employees. And I might add that on a typical wind farm project, I was a, what they call a steward on a couple of, kind of responsible for making sure the guys do their job and all that, on top of running machinery. I had, I think, about 45 to 50 total operating engineers under me at that point, and there's about an equal number of ironworkers, equal number of laborers and electricians on those. They're very good projects for income for us, and, you know, we're proud of the work that we have on those over the years. LaSalle County specifically, some more of the economics of them, they have 221 turbines out there. I spoke with some county officials. The fees alone up there for, it was $25 per linear foot, and that came out to about one and a half to $2 million, somewhere in that area for the fees, just the permit fees. And obviously, you guys all know the tax per megawatt hour, et cetera, et cetera. The tax assessor's office said that they bring in about $3 million per year right now in total tax revenue. Now, that depends on what your tax rate is and what taxing body, you know, I'm not an expert on that, but that's what the tax assessor's office told me. And so, I mean, mainly, I just wanted to get up here and say that another side of this is the income generated for local people. Part of those eight people, there was more of them, but the pits and quarries, if they supply the rock for these projects, they might have a million tons of rock that go into, you know, some of the aggregates. And it's like a dollar, we figure a dollar per ton of stone goes into the local economy or through, he was telling me through like this, that, so there's a lot of added value. And I know the pits and quarries down here that I have members working at, I think Prairie has like 15, the 16 workers down there are from Livingston County, and of course, the other gentlemen's quarry, they're all from Livingston County. So there's a big contingent of Livingston County that work down here. I know those were questions that came up way back when we started these hearings. So to be fair, I wanted to point out some of that also, that... So to be fair, I wanted to point out some of that also, that the economics of it do matter to a lot of us that do that type of thing for a living. That's all I really have.
All right. Do you have any questions for Mr. Yedna? Okay. Mr. Blazer, do you have any questions?
No such.
All right. Mr. Lupians?
Yeah, just a few. Thank you for coming, Mr. Yedna. I just have a couple of general questions. Do you have a local 150 that you remember?
Correct.
Local 150 is a very large local as far as area of the state of Oklahoma.
Correct.
I know it goes up in the Chicago area. Do you know, can you give me an idea how big it is or what counties it covers? I mean, area, whatever states it's for you.
Yeah, well, let's say the southern end here is Livingston, Kekke County, Livingston County, Platteville County, then it gets over into the Moline area, and just about everything there north is the little carve out of Bureau County and Henry County. So just about everything here north. And then we end into Indiana, and we divide that up into districts, geographic districts.
Okay. But so pretty much, I eat the north and then all the way down to Livingston and going from there?
Yes.
With some exceptions, and I'm not trying to.
Correct.
Yeah. You said you've worked in, first of all, Ottawa's in the South County, am I correct?
Correct.
It's been a while, I apologize. You said you worked on wind turbines in numerous counties.
Yes.
Could you?
LaSalle County, Ottawa project, Lee County, and Bureau County.
Okay. So for the Lee County and Bureau County projects, you still lived in Ottawa, correct?
Correct.
And you traveled in daily, I assume, for each project?
Came overnight.
Correct. Your family still bought their groceries in Ottawa area?
Sure.
Okay. You said that eight members of the Livingston County part of local 150 worked on a project with you, or have worked on projects with you over the years?
Yeah, that was off the top of my head, I guess.
There may be more. I'm not, just kind of trying to set up the next question.
Yes.
I apologize. And those projects, were those projects in LaSalle, Bureau, and maybe the last one we told you?
Lee County.
I apologize. So those Livingston County, Livingston County Union people were traveling there by the day, just like you.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I heard you say that the Coyoka Ridge project, one or two of the contractors for the project came from Livingston County, I think you thought.
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
And maybe I wrote this down wrong, so please, I'm not trying to put words in the wrong. On the Coyoka Ridge project, I think you said that one or two of the contractors, subcontractors worked, were from Livingston County on that project.
Yeah, I know, I know one, there's probably more, but the one that I know the best, he had, his company had some work on that. I had asked him, you know, about what his revenue stream was for the little that he did there.
Okay, so his contract amount was about $400,000, you thought?
He thought that he had revenues in the area of $400,000, just for his part. It was kind of a smaller part, he said, but he thought it was pretty cooked or whatever.
But there were a lot more than, there were a number of contractors on that project, correct?
Yeah, there's tile, you know, there's tile contractors, there are road contractors, obviously, there's suppliers. In general, I'll say, I worked for a construction contractor that did a lot of the work. We sub, they did the general and self-performed, but they still subbed out some of the work. So it was the same situation, that he was a subcontractor to a general contractor.
And who did you work on that project for?
I worked for a white construction.
And they're located in Indiana?
Uh, yes.
And you don't know whether Invenergy has sent out bid packets to anybody to general contractors project that is a Livingston County contractor, do you?
I wouldn't know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yedna.
You're welcome.
All right. Any members from the audience have any questions for Mr. Yedna? Anybody out there, questions?
John Hayes. I've just got a couple of quick questions. John, do you know personally these people that you're referring to? I mean, you don't like to know where they live, know their names?
Yeah, there's a couple of them here tonight that are here with us. I know, I know all of them, going through my list here of the guys I got, I know all of them.
Okay. Of these people, how many of them live in a wind farm?
Um, well, let's see. Live in a wind farm?
Yeah, let's say within a quarter mile of Turbine.
I couldn't answer that, I'm not sure. I know they're from spread around this area, over to Pontiac, even towards Flanagan, I see a couple from there. So I would be, I wouldn't be telling the truth if I told you exactly where they live at, because I don't know exactly where, how close they are.
Do you know of many that do not live in a wind farm?
Uh, there are probably at least two or three on my list here of your Livingston County guys that live in Pontiac proper, I'll say.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Yedna? County staff, council? Other? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'd like to call Ambiro Cavazos. He was already up once, but then call him up. All right, Mr. Cavazos, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the testimony you shall give in this case now and here will be the truth and nothing but the truth, or that you suffer the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
All right. Please state your name and address for a court reporter, and give her the spelling again.
Ambiro Cavazos Strong, rural Strong. Okay, well, this won't be too long. Basically, I want to talk about an experience I had going to Odell. I've been there three times. And I just want to say I was really got no opinions on windmills either way. And I do know, obviously, it's only from my experience. I want to talk about wind turbine syndrome, I guess, basically my experience. And I just first want to say too that I was very skeptical about it. I did hear of some people that had some effects from it. And later on, I found out that the windmill about a quarter mile from my home. Now it's a little bit further, hasn't it changed now? And I have now one about a half mile, and I think four others within a mile and a half. So I guess I went up to Odell just to see what it'd be like to be around these windmills. And I took, it was me, my wife, my mother, and my three little girls. The adults knew why we were going, and the children didn't, we were just, we were just on a road trip. Anyways, I'll make it to the point. I'm here to say that there are effects from these windmills. I want to know that is affected by it. To tell you all the effects, you know, may not matter, I guess what matters is it is real. And because it's new doesn't mean it's not real. People, I think, are skeptical, and rightly so. I am more concerned about my children. One of my little girls, they talked about feeling, basically, she said her brain felt mushy. That was her way of explaining it. And it kind of made sense to me because I was feeling something similar that day. That was just the first day. I didn't take, I didn't take them the second time I went. I did take them the third time. The children have no voice in any of this. You know, I was reluctant to speak, but I am speaking for my children and for anyone else who has children. And as the doctor said earlier, what about the babies who don't have a voice? People might find out they have a fussy baby, you don't know why. That's my concern. I don't know if that's going to happen or not. You know, I've heard of people abandoning their homes. And I'm here to say I have a home that's going to be in the footprint of this Invenergy project. And I, I'm not going to give up, I'm not just going to abandon my home. But I will say that I'd be weak for my children's health if they are complaining to me about health problems. I'd have to do something different. I don't want to move from my house. I've been there almost five years now, been in the area 14 years. And I just want to ask everyone, who really wants to leave their home world? Nobody does. And I recently found out, I don't do just a lot of studying on where the windmills are going to be located. I guess I was kind of selfish when I found out it was going to be near me is when I really took notice. I found out there was going to be some windmills close to school in Forest, which my girls will attend, and probably a lot of people here too. And I'm not sure exactly how far, it was around a mile, I think is what it is. And to me, that's pretty serious, because I know this is real. If I had a choice to move into an area with windmills or without, and this is not because something Mr. Seider said or anybody else, I would not move into an area with windmills, Without giving all the details on my three experiences, you know, the pressure in the head, in my ears, headaches, things like that, I mean, you can ask anything you want and I'll tell you. But when it pertains to this application, I feel, I feel that this application is in violation to the standards of special use. Number two, on the standard of special use states that the application will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. And I know, due to my experience, I know that it will. And number five, in the standards of special use states that the application will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted or substantially reduce the value of neighboring property. From what I understand, it will. And number six, in the standards of special use states that the application will not impede order of growth, development, and improvement of surrounding properties for those uses permitted in the zoning district. If my property values are reduced, it could keep me from making improvements or be any expansion on my property. Therefore, again, I believe this application is in violation of the standards of special use. If permitted, my health and the health of my family would be in jeopardy. My property values are uncertain to be reduced, which can cause undue financial stress. We may not be able to enjoy properties we do now due to the adverse health effects, nuisance, noise, and flicker. If permitted, this development will impede potential growth and improvements to my property as any changes would need to consider the impacts of the neighboring turbines. In my opinion, the special use will substantially, potentially, permanently injure the appropriate use of my property and will most likely be detriment to my family's convenience and welfare. I respectfully request that you consider these violations when you make your recommendations to the county board. Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions? Anybody from the seat? All right. Units of local government, any questions for Mr. Cavazos? All right, Mr. Blazer? No such. All right, Mr. Lupians?
Yeah, how old are you?
My oldest is 11 and I have two nine-year-old twins.
And which one of the three, I said, her brain was feeling mushy?
My 11-year-old.
Okay. And you did not give her any more information about the reason why she was in a wind farm, et cetera, than you did the two nine-year-olds?
Uh, no, they gave you nothing.
And the two nine-year-olds did not mention that they had any problem?
No, actually, my wife and my mother and my two nine-year-olds didn't, no effect from it.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody from the audience have any questions for Mr. Cavazos? Any questions out there for? Anybody? County staff, county council? Anything? Thank you, Mr. Cavazos.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, is Dan Betts here? Dan Betts? Dan Betts? Going once.
I understand they had some car trouble, Mr. Yedna.
All right. All right, Patrick Holmes. Patrick Holmes, are you here this evening? Patrick Holmes, all right, Mr. Holmes, hold on. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give in this case now and here shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you have? All right, please state your name and address for a court reporter.
Patrick Holmes, Forest 26596, East 1000 North Road. I'm a landowner. I own and operate Brown. Townships of Forest, Charlotte, Pleasant Ridge, Loca, Odell, Esmond, and Union Township. I got the opportunity at a young age to build a farm with my dad. Be on the tractors, combines, equipment, at a very young age. And I have a major passion for farming and expanding my operation. My young son, Cole, he's seven years old, he was combining this fall with me. We're doing beans and we're dumping on the wagon. And he goes, you know, Dad, why is that sign in the window with your name on it? And I said, you know, it keeps elevators keeping the farm separate as we take it in. We make a few more rounds in the field. And he goes, Dad, boy, I'd like to have my name on that sheet someday. Makes me proud that my dad, his dad, myself, and my kids maybe want to farm down the road. In 1984, I bought my first piece of property. And on that piece of property, it used to be that there'd be Realtor signs out front of them. And about two or three of them that I bought had them Realtor signs on it. My point is, people had opportunities to buy ground and do what they want with it. I drove this fall around and I seen these signs around that have our land on it. You know, that's nice for people to say, but on my property, I pay the principal and interest payments, I pay my property taxes, you know, it's mine of my family's ground. I've got four kids in Perry Central. I got one in eighth grade, one in sixth grade, and I got twins in second grade. On an average of them, straight A's, two of them right now have Bs, but the rest are straight A's. I owe this to the Perry Central teachers. They're fantastic. I can't say enough about Meadowbrook and the kids that I have in the lower end, you know, area. They're going into high school next year, so we'll see how that goes. But I've got a little, I got a daughter that's seven, she was diagnosed with polio. And I got to say, we went in, it was one of the first meetings in Pontiac. The next day, we went into it, and it consisted of the homeroom teacher, the principal in Meadowbrook, the speech therapist, and a lady out of Hartland that helps with special needy kids. And the passion that these people have, it just goes out. I couldn't be prouder of being involved with Perry Central School. You know, our teachers, they're really amazing how they really care. It was a good situation for us because she graduated with speech. At that time, they're going to keep an eye on her. But I'll get to my point on some of this stuff here in a second. The extra money that somebody can bring into the area, you know, our, you know, people don't think school- don't think school things can get cut. Well, our ARB, you know, ARB in Meadow Brook hasn't been cut. You know, the extracurricular activities, music band, marching band, you know, depend on community, you know, cooperation, sponsors, you know, I've got band, you know, things that people, you know, donate a lot of money to, you know, to keep them going. And I'll say our music programs are fantastic and people went to them and heard the band play and our music is fantastic. You know, the teachers are great. I went to Prairie Central's spaghetti supper the other night, the donations went to the band and chorus, you know, so they could go out and do some other things, expand their things. And, you know, they sang the National Anthem, the band played, you know, did a fantastic job, just a great job. And, you know, and what can we do in the future with that? Singing, you know, you can see some of these programs get cut out. You know, we sing in church, there's musical instruments paid in church, in ours anyway, I'm not saying about everybody's church, I don't wanna get into religion, please. But in our church, you know, we do do it and people do it, it's a neat thing. You know, a gentleman brought up here a few nights ago, you know, up north, the average income for a household was $178,000. For livings that count, an average was $58,000, $53,000 per household. You know, and I'll get back to that point in a second too. Prairie Central District, you know, our schools, 2014, 15, got this from the newsletter at the beginning, not myself, but my wife pulled it off the internet. 2,153 students registered at school, 969 are low-income, 45% of the people, you know, are low-income in our area. No matter what, before, windmills are not, you don't think there's issues? It opened my eyes and I would've never looked into this stuff if it wasn't for the windmill company coming in. But we do have issues in our area, you know, it sends my heart that we have that many people in low-income. You know, the teachers' contracts, you know, they're coming up this year, you know, there's gonna be things with the schools that people are gonna do want more money, just like I do selling my crops, and I understand that. So the school's gonna have to bring in some more money. And at one of the meetings here, the picture was in the Fairberry Blade in the zoning, and then they had Prairie Central issue $4.3 million for a bond. The only reason I'm bringing the bond up, a gentleman came to and said, boy, you don't need your windmills, you know, the bills will be paid with the bond. Well, if I understand right, from, the bonds are paying the existing bills, you know, not more out there. We expanded it through and we're already starting to pay for that. He didn't even realize that it was basically a loan, a bond's a loan, we gotta pay them, you know, the taxpayers. So just another issue, you know. You know, I've been brought this, 'cause there's people that know that me and my family's for it. And they came to me and said, why aren't more people speaking out? Well, there's 30,000 acres that signed up for this program, that people are committed to it, you know, and there's X amount of people against it, I understand. But there is people for it. I got some instances that I've talked to people that the reason they have it, people have talked to them and pushed them away from it, don't wanna talk. So that's their prerogative, you know, it's too bad it's gotta be that way, but it is. I wanna wrap up, 'cause I'm gonna keep it short, everybody's sick of these meetings too. But, you know, you know, I think this is a good opportunity for a lot of people. I know there's issues that need to be talked about and, but the doctor just a couple minutes ago talked, you know, you know, I like to say, you know, for myself, during the day or evening, I poke my wife around quite a bit. And I tell you, you know, she always says she's got a headache, so, you know, very interesting, you know, you can't get your chacha when you want. But anyway, I'm done. Thanks.
Any questions from the DVA?
Mr. Harms, 45% of the people that are low-income will still be low-income even if the windmills come in, correct?
Yes.
They won't be the ones earning the money from the windmills?
No, but the taxpayers are gonna help pay that, 'cause they help pay for the low-income people.
It's still not gonna benefit them, their income, it's gonna benefit the school, it's not gonna benefit the families.
Yeah, but it's still what I'm coming from with their, I understand where you're coming from, but for extra income, it's gonna help pay for their meals and stuff, the taxpayer pays for it, no?
Well, they're gonna pay for it one way or the other, but aren't the wind towers up or not?
I guess you're right, yeah.
Any other questions from the DVA?
Mr. Harms, do you have a little question on these wind turbines?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not, we did sign up our home where it is on our piece of property, but approximately, and I don't know the exact footage, I didn't do the research on it, but it's north of us, I can't say the definite figure, but it's a neighborhood across the road that's getting them, and they're around us on the other side too.
Okay, will you have any on the county home?
Ground Island, yes.
So you do have something to lose if they don't come through?
Yes, I've got potential for turbines.
Earlier you talked about owning ground and pride of owning it and everything else. So how do you feel about a person that only owns a house of five acres that has no say-so where they come in, and that's their same pride, and they've got their livelihood in that also, am I correct?
Yeah, there's no doubt about it.
And really, they don't have money to say about this. If you wanna book one up for Joe Glow wants to, or whoever outside of going to the meeting, you can voice their opinion, am I correct?
Yes.
And you would lose a certain amount of percentage if they did not go through, if they did not have the windmills, correct?
Right.
But if they cannot live in their house, they could lose everything they have, in my record.
If they can't live in their house?
If they, if turbines bother them the way some people have talked about, and they have to move out, basically, they're losing what they worked for, their thing they have, everything they worked for.
So you're saying, like, the turbines are gonna tear the house up?
No, if they had to move out, they could not stand in there, they're basically losing what they worked for, in my record.
Yeah, I guess so.
That's the only question I have, thank you. Units of local government, out there? Again, please identify yourself and the government you represent.
Mark Seiger, Prairie Central School Board. Are you aware that the reason that we're in the financial shape we are in because of the state alone?
For the state alone?
It's because of the state alone, the reason we're in the shape we're in.
Okay.
And with some of these studies, we've seen that if our assessed values dropped, that we could be more dependent on the state? For our income?
Okay.
And so could you expect how that's gonna help us add all these programs to be donated cuts? If we're more dependent on the state than we're relying on it right now?
'Cause you're saying as a school board member right now, you're saying that, are they up on all their payments then too? Is that what you're saying? So they're up?
I'm asking you a question. If you were aware that the reason we're in the shape we're in is because of lack of funds from the state alone?
No, I guess not, you know? The state's not keeping up with their payments, I guess what you're saying?
Yes, I just have a few where that. Okay, no more questions?
All right, Mr. Blazer, do you have any questions? Mr. Lukeyans, any questions?
No, sir.
All right. Any other members from the audience have any questions? Please state your name for the record.
David Lukeyard, Chatterfield, Illinois.
Amy Patrick. You mentioned a little bit about your son and how he wanted a farm. And then you own quite a bit of farm, I think you said?
Yes.
And you had made the decision to put wind towers on your farm?
Proposed to, yes.
Yes, proposed to. So you went through some kind of evaluation to decide whether there was a benefit to you or not?
Yes.
Is that right? Did you explain some of the things that you looked at to whether or not it was a benefit or not to you in your mind?
Right. I would say what we looked at first, you know, for myself as a financial situation, no doubt about it, you know, three, 350 corn, you know, I bought a lot of property at some higher dollar prices, you know, 90,000, that's my doing, nobody else's, you know, but the extra income sure wouldn't help when farming's a tough industry what it is. It's like, example is, a guy went to a meeting the other day and they used to call it agriculture a family business, and now it's called agribusiness. You know, it's sad that that's where it's going, but agribusiness is where we're at.
So you're saying that the financial payment from Inverge was a positive for you, one of the positive?
One of my factors in making my decision, yeah.
Right. And did you find some, did you look and consider some of the potential negative impacts on your farm?
There is some things we gotta work on, there's no doubt, you know?
Would one of those, would one of those be drainage?
There is no doubt about it, no doubt about it. You're gonna have to be out there watching and take care of it, help the people to get the bid. I know some other area people had, one of our area tile people watched the tile on one of the programs over around.
What, excuse me, what about tile that are gonna be crushed by the crane that you can't identify? Did you consider that?
Well, and talking to the people that, you know, they'll come back and fix it, you know, I know.
But how would you identify if they're just driving over and they're crushing it and, you know, there was no water flow in it at that time, you don't have any way of knowing that it was crushed?
You're saying down the road, if it happens, you're down the road. You know, you know, I farm by the Vermillion River, we're fixing tile all the time, but you know, I'm not gonna leave it sit, I wanna fix it. So probably if they had the money, they will start tying all their farms in.
So you would use some of the money from Inverge's payments then to make those repairs?
Right. I'm hoping that they're gonna come in and fix that issue.
But they would be reimbursing you?
One way or both.
Okay, all right, but you have a lot of drainage on your farms, is that right?
Yes.
And some of that drainage is mutual aid tile that crosses from an upstream property line, right?
Some of it, yeah.
Well, now what about that producer? How is he going to get compensated for damage on the tile that's on your property that's affecting the drainage on his property if he's not a participant on the wind farm?
Well, I would say probably on the tile part of it, it's gonna come on my problem first, is where the tile breaks and then starts backing up. I'm gonna wanna fix that as fast as I can, so I'm not hurting other people up the road and I.
But if there is damage up there, how would they be compensated? In other words, if that big tile collapses and your upstream landowner had a puddle there with the drainage inlet on it, if you're familiar with that answer?
Right, yeah.
And your tile plugged up and because of the crossing of the crane, and puddle on your neighbor filled up with water and drowned with the crop, you definitely would have damage, is that correct?
Well, I hope I fix it before the problem would be there, but I guess it could happen.
It could, in two days' time, it could drown the crop out, right?
Well, we farm 800 acres, a lot of acres by the Vermillion River, when we get five inches of the rain, we got eight, nine hundred acres underwater, three, four feet deep.
But the example I was giving on mutual aid tile, that would affect the upstream land?
I guess it could, yeah.
Okay, what about, was another concern you looked at, aerial spraying? Did you look at some of the increased costs maybe by having wind farms on your property?
I don't think it's that big a difference, talking half-assed, is if turbines on some of the grounds in O'Dell, and they're not charging any difference at this time. Maybe they will be with more, but at this time, no.
But would you think that another landowner that wasn't participating that had to pay an additional amount of money, do you think he would be, should be compensated some way?
That he doesn't have a turbine on it? Yeah, I don't think, I don't think they'll charge anything if they don't have a turbine on it, no. There won't be a price difference, I would think.
That the adjacent property could be closer to the turbine than some of your property that the turbine's on? Is that right?
To your opinion? Yeah, I guess so.
So there would be no, you know, you're getting reimbursed a large amount of money for putting that tower up. You can handle some additional cost for wind spraying or aerial spraying, and you can pay it from the amount of revenue that you're getting from Inverge, is that correct?
Yeah, but I don't understand, a person without a turbine, they're not gonna up the price to spray that, I guess, I don't, I don't get it.
Well, if there's turbines in an area and a person only owns 40 acres?
Right.
And there's turbines completely around them?
Okay.
Those turbines will affect the?
I've talked to a couple farmers up by O'Dell that have browned, and they said their aerial fees did not go up at this time, I'm not saying no more.
And my example was if they did, how would those other people be compensated in your opinion?
Well, you know, they probably wouldn't be.
They wouldn't be?
Right. I would guess, I don't know.
No other questions, thank you. Any other questions from the public? Anybody else? Please state your name and address for?
Warren, Fairberry, Illinois.
Thank you.
Patrick, I just wondered, you talked about low-income, 45%. How many low-income people do you have working for you?
None.
Would you share with us your average?
That I know of, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Would you share with us your average, average hourly rate of pay, roughly?
Yeah, I can, hold on.
No?
Not relevant.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions from Mr. Harms? County staff, council? All right, thank you, Mr. Harms. Did we have any, anything else? No, okay, thank you, Mr. Harms, thanks. All right. Donald Harms. All right. Mr. Harms, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall given in this case now in here shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, self-deprecating? All right, please state your name and address for a court reporter. Go ahead. Can I have to speak into the microphone, Mr. Harms?
Excuse me, Donald Harms, February, Duke is my middle name, Newbury, excuse me. First, I'd just like to make one point on the noise issue. My granddaughter Megan and her husband just recently, several months ago, moved down near Benway Airport. Recently, I just asked her, how do you stand the noise of the jets taking off? Her reply to me was, after you're here a while, you don't even notice it. And on the illness issue, my wife, Miss, she was our eighth grader in a grade school, she missed that with pneumonia. And about 20 years later, she had motion of one lung removal. And after that, it was her appendix, and a couple of years later, it was a melanoma the size of a silver dollar. Excuse me. And later she got, she became dizzy, top-heavy, and became weak. And after diagnosing her and so forth, she had a non-malignant brain tumor. And last few months ago, she was checked again, and she had a heart, a malnourished heart, it was leaking. My point is this, if we live near a wind farm, the people that are opposed to wind farms would say it's a turdence of causing that problem. My pet project is education, it always has been since my first child was born, and it will be until the day I die. I served 15 years on a first will be until the day I die, I served fifteen years on a first-year college program for education, I have eight children, seven finished college, one of them a two-year program, I've got twenty-one grandchildren, six, seventeen, or, excuse me, sixteen graduated from college, one is in college, and Patrick's four is still in junior high and grade school. Well, one of the first meetings when I was leaving, I heard a group of people talking, and I heard someone say, it's only money, and so, my folks, I'm telling you, this is a lot of money, and what I'm telling you is today is gonna be facts. I went to the assessor's office, and I talked to him and asked him if he could come up with some figures for me that I could repeat, that was fairly accurate and so forth, and this is what he told me, is the information provided from the county assessor's office, the information presented is an estimate, but the levy has not been set, the figures may be higher or lower. The income assumes a hundred and thirty-six dollars, a hundred and thirty-six dollars, the Prairie Central U and A is going to receive approximately one million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars a year, the first year. Forest Fire District, seventy dollars, is going to receive sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. The Forest Library, seventy-three dollars, fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Forty Towers, Pleasant Ridge Township, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. After a break, after my article came out in the Blade, one of the opponents came over to me and said, how in the world is Pleasant Ridge Township ever gonna spend a thousand dollars a week, well, folks, that's a pretty good handle, that's a pretty good model to have. Rural Cell Cast, the entire wind farm, a hundred and thirty-six dollars, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Livingston County, one hundred and thirty-six dollars, one hundred and thirty-six towers, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Multi Township, seventy dollars, fifty-seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. A hundred and thirty-six Towers, Harford Community College, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Bayard Township is a half a township, seventy towers, will reach, hit seventy-seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The PC Bond, the Prairie Central, and Charlotte Bond, and the Vermillion River Outlet Drainage District is not on here, you only need nine, nine, uh, nine, uh, taxing bodies, not taxing bodies, but revenue coming to them. The income to landowners, they have a contract of twenty-five years with additional ten-year option, thirty thousand acres is committed at twenty-five dollars an acre, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, every year. I put a hundred and thirty turbines on there because I heard that one time, but it should have been a hundred and thirty-six, but I'm using a hundred and thirty turbines at approximately eight thousand dollars average per turbine, that includes the road and the underground wire that goes to it, that's another million, forty thousand dollars. We would receive, anyone getting a turbine would receive a one-time construction startup of ten thousand dollars per turbine, that would be a one-time deal of one million, three hundred thousand dollars. The transmission line is approximately just over nine miles in length, and every landowner along that route to receive two thousand dollars per coal, which is an estimate of sixty-four coals result in a yearly income of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Back to the Prairie Central School District, the first year they're gonna renew, they would receive this one million, six hundred and some thousand dollars, the second year, what I understand is that the state will depreciate that or cut about a million dollars off of that, but you would still be netting six hundred and some thousand dollars over beyond what they're getting now. The towers, they depreciate four percent a year, so that would be going down some, the income from that, but then, Invenergy would increase two percent a year, or coal, whichever is the most, cost of living expense, whichever is the low, whichever is the largest, so there's gonna be about two percent differential. One of the ladies had an article in the Fairberry Blade, he talked about pressure and hoped that we wouldn't put pressure on the boards before they learned all the facts and the problems with this thing, and I'm gonna present this, when I heard what the school board was going, the revenue was going to come into that, I went home, I said to my wife, the school board has gotta be doing cartwheels, getting this kind of revenue coming in every year, and yet they stayed neutral, I'd like to know why in the world, how a group of people can put pressure, or an individual can put pressure on a board to keep them from doing the job that they were elected to do. When I ran on the school board, I ran on the platform that I was gonna do the very best, provide the very best education for the students with the money we had to spend, and I would have thought these people should have ran on the same platform. I went to the, I went to the superintendent, I wanted to ask, the superintendent of schools, I wanted to ask him a question, and when I went in there to ask him, he said, I cannot answer one thing, they've got my lips sealed, boy, I didn't like that, one bit. I went to a man that I knew was going, was considering a lot of land, and they have a wind farm and so forth, and have these landlords, and I asked him if he'd come in and speak, and he turned around and he said, well, I'm for the wind farm, but he said, I've got some friends that are not, and I don't wanna cause any hard feelings, or that's tough. Well, I'll tell you this, if I cause some hard feelings tonight, what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say what I think, and if it causes hard feelings, folks, I'm gonna be eighty-five years old in a few more months, and I haven't got much time to last anyway, so I'm gonna say what I think. I heard a lady from here called up and talked to Richard Fox, I heard this secondhand, so I don't like to repeat things secondhand, so I went up and we went up and we talked to Richard, a very, very nice man, and he told me, the lady called and asked him several questions about the wind farm up there, Odell and so forth, and he talked to her and finally she said, well, I can't find anything negative from you, so I guess I'll hang up. But I tell you this, he said he'd be more than happy to talk to any person if ever they'd wanna come up and talk to him, if you go up forty-seven and one sixteen, you go four, I believe it's four miles north, and he lives right on the northwest corner, the transmission lines go right by his place, so it's easy to find, and he'd be more than happy, he's a great guy to talk to, and when we left his place, we went west about a mile, mile and a quarter, and that's where the collection facility was at, and that company has built a real long building there, I suppose for office, offices and equipment and so forth, I know it's probably ten, fifteen cars sitting parked out there in the parking lot, I suppose they were employees, but I kinda wish now I stopped and went in and shot the breeze with these guys, but we did. We talk about roads and things, you know, and road commissioners are concerned about roads, and likely so, but we, when Patrick got this ground up in Odell and so forth, when, many, many times, we would go up there and I'd take a different road just to make sure what the condition of the roads were like and so forth, and you folks, for peace of mind, you ought to go up there and just drive through the whole wind farm area, and I think you would be very, very pleased to see the condition of their roads. The other day, last summer, I know that I was going from Forest to Fairberry, and when you go by McDonald's, right along there is the Forest, or the Fairberry Food Bank, and this was about four-thirty, quarter to five, they had two benches sitting on the east side of that building, and that building, those benches was completely full, there was people sitting in cars waiting for that food pantry door to open to get their supply of groceries, now, folks, if anybody could go up to them and say, this is only money, I mean, I wonder what they would think of that. Couple, three months ago, I, with this thing going, I called Joan Bullard, Dr. Odell, and she wasn't there, but I left a message, and I said, what do the people think of the wind farm up here, and she called back and talked to my wife, I wasn't home, and she said, well, one thing is that the wind farm built, put a new addition, paid for a new addition onto their school. We talked about, Kelly talked about the drop-off on the road, and the sign that he saw up here, I believe he said, here Coy County, well, folks, I've seen those signs too, every summer, and that's where road commissioners, they grind the ditch out and the shoulders, and they do have a drop-off, but that sign is up there because they have not applied the rock in along the edge to get it smooth in case a car runs off the edge, and so that's why I feel the signs are sitting there. We're sitting here with the kind of revenue, if I came up with the right figures and stuff, folks, we're gonna be talking revenue coming into this community and the county of over three million bucks a year, that's spendable income, now, part of that money is gonna go out of state, I figure if I'm right, somewhere around thirty-four out of state landowners in this town, in our area, and of course, the state and the fans are gonna get their share, but they're still gonna leave a lot of money in here, and I believe, if my fingers are prepped, I think my finger is closer to three million, three hundred thousand is going to come in. Patrick appeared, when I heard, when we signed up for this program and so forth, I went to Patrick and I said, you know what, you are one of the highest hills in Livingston County, the wind always blows up there, and I said, you will probably get maybe one or possibly two turbines up there, but he turns around, he didn't get any because of setback problems. I think the third question to ask, folks, is, we're talking a lot of money here and so forth, and I think, do the opponents have some form of a plan in place to replace part of this money or all of it, I think that's a fair question to ask, if you do, I kinda, I think we should hear about it. As you know, Livingston County is a very, very strong area for conservation, soil and water conservation, and you know, we all try to do the very, very best job we can on that and so forth, but we still have people in the, do a good job in soil and water conservation, yet there against the wind turbines, and that bothers me, and I'm just gonna tell everybody you people, if you get over to Pontiac, go into the Soil and Water Conservation Building, and go in there, in that room, go back into Eric Taggitt's office, and take a look at that picture that he's got hanging on the back of his wall there and so forth, and what you'll see is says, conservation in action, and there's a wind turbine, there's a wind turbine in that, on that picture. Many, many years ago, Matt said to me, everybody gets one big break in their lifetime, some people take advantage of it, and others let it pass by, and folks, this is one, one big break for the Prairie Central School District, and the taxing bodies in this thing, and the farm owners and the landowners in this thing, and it's gonna bring a lot of prosperity to this community, and I, I'm gonna say the biggest share of this prosperity is gonna come into Fairberry and Pontiac, those are the two main shopping center, and I don't go to Dwight that much, and probably they've got a shopping center also, but I, I, I'm gonna ask the board to consider this carefully, and I'm gonna ask for a vote, or ask for a yes vote, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Arms. All the members of ZPA, do you have any questions for Mr. Arms? Be careful, I call you, dude, 'cause I'm gonna slip up and call you that, is that a real thing? I'm gonna ask you like I did back, you talk about the tax money that we're gonna have here, if it lowers the value of the houses in the footprint, we will lose tax money, am I correct?
The, for the school?
No, it's the value of the property and the homes and that goes down, there'll be tax money lost there too, which would go to the schools and your other municipalities in here, am I correct?
You say, with the turbines coming in, it's gonna lower the value of the property?
It lowers the value of the property of houses around there, which we've heard testimony both ways, if we all have and will not.
I don't, I don't know that.
So there's a chance of losing, okay, another question then. The Odell School District and the Sonoma School District both put up new buildings with tax money from windmills, and I know for sure that one of them has raised their taxes since windmills come in, and I think the other one has too, so I, you can't guarantee that that is, that the taxes will not go up if they come in, can you?
No.
And I think as Mr. Slavel said, and they get testimony that the tax, when the windmill money comes in, the state tax money goes back down, it's kinda hard to get that back once you take, takes it away from the government, I mean, that's something that has to be considered, am I correct?
Maybe, I don't know.
Okay. As I look through this sheet that you handed out to me, it says thirty thousand acres committed at twenty-five dollars an acre, is that, is that a payment that Invenergy makes to every, everybody in the footprint that has acreage?
That is correct.
Oh, okay, alright, I wasn't really aware of that figure out there, so, and that's just, I guess, my fault, okay, we talked about Richard Fox, and you made some reference to speaking to him, how many towers does he have on his property, and how close are they, I mean, we know right where he lives.
Who's this again, sir?
Richard Fox, you talked about Richard Fox.
I, I'm gonna guess, go home and do it, fifteen or eighteen towers, I think they've got a lot of ground, and it's spread around, gets spread around and so forth, and I can't, but I, I heard one time fifteen, eighteen towers, that would be all the family's home.
Okay, so, it's a safe assumption to say that he's generating a significant revenue from any wind turbines?
He generates a lot of revenue.
Okay, okay, and when they built that, you remember, and I remember, 'cause I was there, he had the lay-down yard too, is that, that's right, Richard Fox had the lay-down yard, where they staged everything, so he generated additional revenue from that.
Where they, where they set up all the supply, yes.
Yeah, okay, alright, okay, so, it's fair to say that he's biased? It's fair to say that Richard Fox is somewhat biased? It's fair to say that Richard Fox has a bias towards windmills? It's fair to say that Richard Fox has a bias towards windmills?
Oh, I think so.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, okay, um, and I, I know that you presented these figures in, 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 wholeheartedly honesty, the way, the way that they were somewhat given to you, but I think there's an important thing that, and I wanna be sure that you understand, towards the end of the life of the project, there's a big gap at the end, certainly for that school district, are you aware of that, where there's actually a year lag where the, where the wind farm stops and the state doesn't pick up?
There is, when, when, when the wind turbines are gonna be depreciating four percent a year, and they're gonna appreciate, what do you wanna call it, two percent, what the, what I understood, when I talked to one of the experts here that presented something about the schools, and I can't remember names, but I went up to him and I said, as the, as the, as the income from the wind farm goes down, will the state aid come up? And he thought it would, and I went to the superintendent of schools, and I was asking a question I wanted to ask him, and he couldn't answer nothing, because he said his lips were sealed, I wanted him, he didn't know this, I wanted him to call the state superintendent of schools in Springfield and come up with that answer.
Okay, did you review the, did you review the testimony from Mr. Malone, though, Mr., from Illinois State, where we actually broke that down?
Did I do that?
Yeah, did you, okay, 'cause there's, there's a hole there, and I want you to Yeah, did you, okay, because there's, there's a holder, and I want you to understand this. Moreover, I'm supposed to be asking you a question, but I do want you to understand that at the end, the project depreciates fully, and there's a year lag when, when the, when the school doesn't receive that revenue, be it from the school, from the, from the state, nor the wind farms.
Right.
You do understand that?
I understand that, that's what I said, I expected what they said. As this goes down, this state aid was supposed to come back up, and they don't stop.
Oh, there's one year where it doesn't?
Yeah, that's one year.
Okay. But that one year though, doesn't equate to about a million and some dollars. So it is the last year, the last year, not the first year, the last year. There's a, there's almost a double payment, but there at the end, there's a year, 20 years down the road, where it goes away.
Know that.
Okay. All right. You should check out that, you should check out that snippet, so that you do understand that. Okay. School districts.
I'll wait for personal comments.
Mr. Blazer.
No, sir.
Mr. Lupinans.
No, sir.
All right. Uh, well, any, any members in the public have any questions for Mr. Arms? Please state your name.
Mark Seidel, Roll Strong, no one. Um, how many of these wind turbines are, is your family going to get?
We're going to get?
Yes. Totally, your whole family? Your whole family, totally, you're going to get two of them?
Total, all of them together? Seven.
Okay, and you know how many acres you have signed up?
I'm going to be pretty shy on the roof.
Well, thanks for being honest on that. So you're due to get a pretty good windfall from this, aren't you?
You should be, yes.
Okay, and then how close are you, are you living in amongst them? Are you going to be living in amongst them?
Am I going to live amongst you? I live down.
So what's the closest turbine to your house?
Who gets out to your place, Patrick?
No, to your house, what's the closest one to your house?
Down here?
Yes.
I don't know, I'm going to look at the map, just check Fairberry.
Okay.
I live up on the church, you know, where I live?
Yeah, I know where you live. I just checked. Just checking to see who. You made a few kind of harsh comments about the jobs we're doing as school board members. Are you not concerned at all about the children's welfare, and if there's going to be some very close to junior high, what kind of effect that could have on our children?
You know what, when that lady showed the slides the other day, and she showed every state in the union almost of wind towers, every place, you go north, south, east, west, there's turbines all over the place. You know, I mean, wouldn't you think that somebody would put a stop to this whole thing if they were causing the health?
Well, a lot of this stuff we're just now finding out, it's new enough technology that, it's like asbestos was, how many years did they use it before it got to be that it was known as the health hazard? But I just wanted to say, one of my, probably my biggest concern as a school board member is the welfare of our childrens. Second would probably be finances. I think the welfare of our children is more important than the finances. And like I stated to your son, if this goes through and our property values drop, we could be working with less local money in relying on the state more, and...
Mr. Chairman, this...
Mr. Slavel, could you, could you redirect this into a question? I went off on a tangent, but I can't get to. But why don't you work on a question?
Why would you just ask?
And also, just to clarify, could Mr. Slavel again confirm, is he, is he speaking now as an individual or as a member of the school?
You started off by doing that.
I'm speaking as an individual now. But I just want you to be aware that that's where we could be. I'm just trying to defend in my position, since we got slammed pretty good. Otherwise, I don't have any more questions.
All right. Anybody else in the audience have any questions? We've got a few.
Larry Keisner. Duke, I've worked with you. Larry Keisner. Duke, I've worked with you and have been a member with you for most of my life. You said there's a lot of revenue coming into this county. If I'm forced to move out of my house, where am I going to gain?
I didn't catch, I, I'm having trouble here, please.
You said there's a lot of revenue coming into this county.
Okay.
Through the wind farm.
Okay.
If I have to move out of my house because of health reasons, where do I gain?
What do you do if you have to move out of your house?
Yeah, where do, where do I gain? What do I gain?
What do you gain?
Yeah.
Do you have your farm signed up?
No, I do not have my farm signed up, because six people within a mile of me own their house, not the property, and they have nothing to say about it. That's not right.
All right, can we focus on a question here? Mr. Arms, the question is...
If, if I have to move out of my house, what do I gain?
Probably have to sell your house and buy another home, wouldn't you, Larry?
I'm forced out of it, right?
Why?
Haven't you heard the health reasons? Is it possible?
You know what, guys, I don't think they look that bad, but they, you know, I used to, before these have happened on this, I used to enjoy going up by Papa on 39 and stuff, and I'd look at them and so forth, and I never really thought they looked that bad, but some people do.
You're not living by, we can show it. That's all I have.
Brad Steiner, Fairberry. Duke, I've got a question. You referenced, early on, you said your daughter moved up by Midway Airport. Did I hear that right?
My daughter?
Your granddaughter, maybe, somebody moved to Midway.
Moved up by Midway?
Okay, yeah. Was the airport there when she got there?
Yes.
So she made a conscious choice to move and live next to the airport?
Yes. Which wasn't his job.
Okay. The people that want to testify here tonight, he lives in his house right now, and they're going to build a turbines near his home. Does he have a choice in whether or not he can live near those turbines or not?
Probably not.
So his remedy would be to sell his home?
He couldn't stand the sound, I'm sure, he knew whatever he wanted to do. Didn't like the lifestyle, let's put it that way.
And if he had to sell his home, there's a chance he would have to sell his home for less money.
You don't know that.
The studies have shown that, I'll reference one tonight, say 25 to 40% potential loss in value in their homes.
Say, what's their house worth?
No, I'm saying, do you, do you believe that there could be a loss if he has to sell his home that is near a turbine? Do you think there's a potential loss in value in his home?
I don't know that.
Okay.
I don't know that, son.
If, are you aware of how the funding with EAB is calculated, as far as residential home sales?
I don't know.
You take the, the, the value of the home, and you divide that by three, and that gives you the EAB.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Steiner, he, he does an all EAB calculation, so it's not involved in, go through this with him.
Oh, I'm going, that's fine. Funding is generated by taxes, correct? Property taxes?
Correct.
And it's, and this potential, the wind farm could generate property taxes as well, correct? If it's constructed?
I would think that would be right.
Okay. If we have a loss in one, and a gain in the other, is it a potential that the, the gain would be lost? If, if one of the revenue streams is diminished, and another one gains, is it possible that the, the gain we think we're going to get could be diminished?
He's asking if the wind turbine income, if, if the money from the wind turbine would be greater or less than the potential loss in property values, the, the income generated from properties.
He wants to go up the house and be less than the, with the income.
He thinks, he's asking, do you think it could ever become a wash where there was, where there was never a net gain?
I don't know that, I don't know.
Okay. And one last thing, you, you mentioned that the schools, and how that when you saw the financial gain, you were shocked that they didn't take that money immediately. What are some of the aspects of the school board that they need to look out for with our school district? Would financing be one of them?
What do they have to look out for, you think?
Yeah, as a school board, what, what do they need to do, what do they need to be concerned with? Is financing one of the areas that they should be concerned with?
I would think, I would think what they've got to look out for and so forth, is, we've, we've got to see county, we've got to see growth come into our area, in order to get more taxes and so forth, in order to at least maintain the type of program that we've got. I know many, several, a year or two ago, I had Patrick's father-in-law with me, we came up the high school road, and I pointed to the high school, and I said, "There is our high school, it's a very, very strong program." But I said, "We also pay the bill for that." But I also said, "It's the best money we can spend."
You know, we had one fellow that testified earlier about his, his family, that he could maybe have to move out of his home.
I heard that.
If students move out of the area, is our funding affected?
Can he be affected, is that what you said?
No, if, if we had less students in our school district, does that, does that affect how much money we get from the state?
Yes.
So if we people move out of the area, we could get less money from the state?
Yes.
Okay. I have more questions.
Any other questions from the audience? Mr. Arms? Oh, county staff? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
For this evening, it's getting late, I do have one other person on the list, I just want to see Durham, is he here?
Yeah.
Durham, are you local? Do you live around here?
In Chatham.
In Chatham, okay. We're going to, we're going to, yeah. If you're local, we'll, it is late. All right. The next meeting dates are Monday, the 23rd, we'll be back here at 6:30. Wednesday, the 25th, back here at 6:30. All righty, I believe Mr. Chairman, for Monday, the 23rd, we're starting with the completion of the cross-examination, and Jerry, the punches, am I right? Phil?
Yes.
Okay. You will have a decision on Rand, Mr. Lupinans. Could you please leave it out, we're still trying to get a little business done here.
Mr. Chairman, what was the question?
Rand?
Yes.
By next week, we'll know what the disposition, disposition of Rand is?
Yes.
And James?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, well, the plan will be, we'll get through Punch, and we may have some opportunity for public comment, I believe, so, all right.